All right, welcome to the Briar City Council meeting of March eight, two thousand and twenty. We'll have a roll call. Twenty twenty-two, thank you. Councilmember Gallagher. Councilmember Crinkie.
Here.
Councilmember Lockhart.
Here.
Councilmember Marley.
Here.
Councilmember Moran.
Present.
Councilmember Nick.
Here.
And Councilmember Roseman. All right, public requests and oral communications. This is the portion of the meeting when citizens can address myself or the council with questions or comments. If you'd please raise your hand if you'd like to address the council or myself. One more time, this is the public requests and oral communication portion of the meeting. This is the time when citizens can address the council or myself with questions or comments. If you'd please raise your hand and we'll acknowledge you. All right, do you see any hands? Paula, I don't see any hands. All right. Moving on to reports of communities and city officials. I'll just report that I've had a number of discussions with respect to our fires contract, our fire service. Gathering information, some of you have contacted me with questions. I appreciate that. And that process of gathering that information is ongoing. Met with the local mayors. Topics of conversation were with respect to policing and some legislative legislative changes that might be coming from Olympia. Different cities are in different levels of coming back to in-person meetings. I think eventually that's going to happen in some of our neighboring cities. But I don't think anybody's doing in-person meetings quite yet. Anybody else with reports?
Chief, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I met with the chief on Quest last Wednesday, and I think we'll be discussing some of that, what we discussed with in our workshop.
And I did community transit and did checks. Community transit is seeing good revenues from tax bases, the sales tax, but their the ridership continues to be low and they are getting comments about the increased indigent indigent population on the coaches. That's kind of ending up being a factor for them to try to start dealing with more.
All right, any other reports?
Mr. Mayor, Don here. I I think like yourself, I attended the Snohomish County Economic Alliance program relative to promoting sort of entrepreneurship within Snohomish County and some of the incentive programs that the Economic Alliance is putting in place for more business development, especially for underserved communities. So did attend that. And then like yourself, I've also been spending a lot of time sifting through documents, trying to understand as much as I can about the upcoming decisions that we'll have to make with respect to fire and emergency services for our city going forward. Interesting, interesting analyses.
Yeah, thank you. It is interesting and I was on it meeting with you and so that's, that's good. Thank you for reporting. Anybody else tonight?
I attended.
March third, I attend, I had a meeting with by video with the mayor and Fire Chief Eastman, the RFA, and had a good conversation about some of the, I'll just say some of the, you know, things that I think need to come together and help to make those decisions and things and had a very good and productive conversation about some of those things. And so looking forward to more of the data as they get us more to help us do some of that analysis and work through and overall was a really good, good conversation. So I appreciate the mayor helping facilitate that conversation.
Bell?
I attended the AWC Legislature update on the fourth of March.
Okay, anything you'd like to report out of that or?
Uh, it sounds like sixteen sixty, that's the housing bill authorizing lots of AWC, lots of accessory dwelling units. Um, that one's kind of stalled at the moment and they're saying it might either die or be scaled back to a work group. So it sounds as though that's not going to move forward. However, that doesn't mean we should step back from our advocacy on that one. And then the five one five five, that's the prejudgment interest. That one is also somewhat stalled. AWC put together a pretty substantial letter with a lot of theaters from various cities that they shared with them in hopes that it would bump that in the direction. And one more, the ten ninety-nine is the climate change resiliency. There was a hope that the greenhouse gas reductions element would be retained in the bill and it was bumped out in the latest version. And so chances are it's going to go to a conference committee which has to make amendments at that point. So the hope is they'll add back the greenhouse gas reductions. AWC has been advocating for that.
All right, thank you, everyone. Anybody else? All right, moving on to approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion for February twenty-two.
Move to approve the February twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two minutes. Second that motion.
We have a motion by Marley, a second by Nick to approve the February twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two city council minutes. All any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and the motion passes.
And Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of our city council workshop minutes of March first, two thousand and twenty-two. Second.
We have a motion by Gallagher, a second by Crinkie.
Uh, that was, I think, Lockhart.
Johnny.
Oh, it's Mr. Lockhart, excuse me.
Sneaky.
Any discussion of the motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. And the motion passes. Uh, tonight, we have a public hearing, public hearing considering home occupation business located at two, three, four, two, eight, thirty-second Avenue West by Susan Ernst for the Little Riders Ranch LLC. So I'm going to open the public hearing at, that clock isn't working. Okay. It's at seven, seven, I'm gonna open the public hearing tonight at seven ten. Tonight we have with us Carrie, our staff member who's going to introduce this home occupation.
Uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, this home occupation business license is for a Little Rider Ranch by Susan Ernst. The application for the business is providing private writing lessons at her home at two, three, four, two, eight, thirty-second Ave West. She is going to be given instruction on how to physically care for the horses as well as holistic aspects and environment for the horses. The children that she's going to be instructing and teaching are going to be four to ten years of age. And they're going to be private writing lessons, one to two people or one to two kids per day. So on that, and it's only going to be fair weather days. So only sunny days that she's going to be giving writing lessons, which I think is great. So there's designated parking on her property available. So off, um, street parking is not an issue. Um, and of course she's going to be the only employee that is giving instruction at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, is Susan with us here tonight? Okay. All right, Susan, welcome to the meeting. If you could unmute yourself and you can address the council with any comments, you don't have to, but if you'd like to make a few comments, that'd be great.
Did that work?
That worked.
Oh, yay.
Welcome to the meeting.
Hi, good evening.
So I know you've you've filled out this report and so you've given the council some information, but if you'd have any other words that you'd like to say, this would be a great time to address the council.
Um, well, as far as the details and the physical part as you have in front of you, this has just been a a goal of mine for years to do. I've been a horse owner in Briar since seventy-eight. And this is just a passion and to pass on my education and love of horses and just something I've been wanting to do for a long time.
All right, thank you. So at this time, the public hearing is open. So if those of you who would like to respond with questions or comments either for or against this business application, would you please raise your hand and we'll let you into the meeting? All right. All right, Sham, welcome.
Hi, everybody. This is Sham Hoffman. I am commenting for in favor of approving the business license. Susan is a big part of the Briar community, has an amazing sense of humor. She's really integral and tries to keep that horse culture live and continuing. And as you can see through her business license application, she wants to keep Briar unique and what it is and differentiates it from the surrounding cities. So I asked that you approve the request.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address the council, please raise your hand, speaking either for or against? One more time, anybody that would like to address in this public hearing this application, please raise your hand and we'll recognize you. You see any hands? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing at seven seventeen. Seven fourteen. We have to adjust that clock up there. Ignore, okay, ignore that clock. So the public hearing is closed. Now for the council, any questions or comments from the council?
Hi, uh, hi, Susan, Don Moran here, and I commend your application. I, interesting concept. And I did check with Carrie prior to our meeting today in looking through the application, everything was checked off appropriately. I wanted also to make certain that some of the restrictions we have in the code we have around agricultural businesses and of course the maintenance of hoofed hoofed animals, which actually is one of our codes, we're in full compliance. Carrie assured me after doing all the math that everything is in perfect shape. The the question I have though is every day I walk by this beautiful horse arena in front of City Hall and I'm just wondering what, why not do the the training there at at the horse arena rather than your backyard and take advantage of that expansive space there?
So.
Well, I love the, oh, sorry. I don't, I, was that addressed to me?
Well, it was, but I, I just, so basically because this is a business and because that's the arena is the city owned, we, 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 because it's a business, it has to be at the residence for liability reasons. That's why it is that way.
Okay.
May, may I please respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah, so at some point, and I wanted to bring up this point that Mr. Moran brought up, and that is simply that arena. Well, anyway, I was one of the women that helped put that together back in the day and I know we've had all kinds of people there, all kinds of reasons using it. I realize things have changed over a period of time with the horse usage. We had shows there, we've had lessons there, we've had so much over the years. My main thing is having this venue in my own yard, my own, we have a half acre back there and I'm looking forward to that. But on top of that, at some point, I did want to bring this to the council that the use of the arena has been quite, as you know, a bit, a bit of a sensitive subject with some of the new people in town. Obviously, it's still getting used. I would simply love to use it. I have purchased and gone through every hoop you can imagine to have this, what started out just at a little tiny pony riding program, it's turned into quite something. But one thing led to another and I had to, of course, get my own equine insurance through American Reliable, which is under the umbrella of Sea Mountain Equine. And it's very specific about the use. I also teach out in Monroe, which is a much different oh, should I say process? I've been working there since November, teaching three to four times a week. Each time I have a venue I will teach at, I have to specifically have coverage for that particular venue or, you know, facility. So if I did have lessons up at Briar Element or Briar, excuse me, Arena, which I would really appreciate doing. I think it's good exposure. I I have a waitlist, so it's not really for my own advantage of, you know, publicity. Like I said, I have quite a long waitlist. But it would be just a wonderful exposure and it'd be great for the children to have that kind of environment to be working in and for our city to maybe see it to be around there. I would say to some of you or to all that I know there's tennis pros helping with the lessons there getting paid. I know there's nannies walking through the park getting paid. I know there's dog walkers going through. Yoga instructors, I know there's several different type of professionals who are using our city property, public property, and I ask that you consider if I go through all the hoops needed that I could also use the arena on, along with my Briar community group that I belong to, working it with them on timing and and you know, the locale of that. So that, that's just my, my two bits about that.
So Susan, why don't, why don't you call me? We'll have, we can have a conversation about that. This is, so let's stick to the agenda tonight.
Okay. Well, I was just sort of dressing.
Yeah, you know, I, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments and I, and it was a good question, Don, but we'll stick to the application for now and then Susan, you can call me, we can have a conversation. Any other questions from council members with respect to this hearing? Okay, one more time, any questions? All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the application for Little Rider Ranch LLC.
Second.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion by Marley and a second by Moran to approve the Little Rider Ranch LLC application. Any discussion of the motion?
Did he get the second or wrong again? Was that John or was it Don?
It's okay. I, I, we might, it might have been a tie across the finish.
It was a tie. Tie goes to Moran. We have a second, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed to the motion, say nay, and the motion passes. Congratulations, Susan.
Thanks, Susan. Thank you so very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, and I look forward to getting a call from you this week.
I, I shall do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Moving on, new business. Consideration for the assignment of funds released for Vine thirteen landscape performance bond in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. I'd entertain a motion.
And Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the release of the assignment of funds for the Vine thirteen landscape performance bond.
Second.
Okay, that was Marley and Crinkie, right?
Yes, that.
I was watching the mouse move. We have a motion by Marley, a second by Crinkie. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay, and the motion passes. Moving on to miscellaneous business, I believe, Paul, you have miscellaneous business?
I do have miscellaneous business.
Anybody else have miscellaneous business before we hear from Paula?
Well, the other thing I had, it actually was a little bit, it's not, well, I, maybe it's the landscaping, but everything got squared away on Vine thirteen. Is that what the, you know, the back? We know we had, there's some
Good question.
stabilization issues with rough walls.
That's all.
It's all squared away, I assume.
Yeah, that's a different matter, but it is, has been taken care of, Martin. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, what you just released didn't have to do with that specific.
Under, understood, understood. It just got me thinking, oh, I just thought I'd ask. So thank you.
Yeah, that, that one there was for a specific lot for stuff that they had to do and they actually moved it from one lot to another. And now both of those lots are completely kosher, so they can have that money back.
Awesome.
Their, their big one will come to you at a later date. Um, we received on Friday an administrative appeal by Mr. Paul Schroder. And the reason why it's not on your agenda for you to do this was because I needed to talk to the city attorney and she didn't have time for me until today. When someone files administrative appeal, for those of you who haven't been through this before, council has to decide whether they will hear it or whether they will pass it on to a hearing examiner. The applicant for this is Paul Schroder, which I know that several of you will all know who, who that is and some of the challenges we've had with Mr. Schroder over the years. After speaking with our city attorney, this, this is another issue where Paul has been given a notice of violation for one of his properties because we received a complaint about his junk cars, his debris in the yard where he just collects random things. And after talking to the attorney, our, our recommendation to council is that you make a motion to assign this to a hearing examiner to be heard because of the fact that some of you have been exposed in previous issues with Mr. Schroder and his, his lots not being kept up.
Think also.
So this would be a quasi judicial decision and because some of you have had exposure to Mr. Schroder, it's our recommendation that a hearing examiner, which would be totally independent person that could evaluate this claim and encounter, what do we call it? What do they call it? His response to our.
Yeah, well, you know, he just, a hearing examiner is very much just looking at the code and how you know, the person either meets or does not. The appeal form had it's supposed to tell how our official that made the decision aired from our code. And there are literally only four words on the appeal form that say not trash and debris. So in order to keep this where it's, you know, not any of us who have dealt with him regarding these issues before, the most fair way to make sure that he is handled is through a hearing examiner who will just look at our code, who has no, you know, no knowledge of any of the past stuff and will just look at the issue at hand.
You know, I need to disclose that Paul is my neighbor.
Yeah, that's part, I mean, that's part of, he has multiple properties in the city.
Yeah, and another thing that we tend to do, and if people have history back to the nineties in Briar, council was often listening to things and not doing a great job and creating a lot of other legal challenges, I'll say, for the city because it is quasi judicial and sometimes emotions and people want to go, hey, but I want this, I don't like that. And and it caused us legal issues that we had to resolve a point. So generally speaking, it has been, I think, a good practice that we've been passing these, even if somebody didn't tell me or we didn't have some connections and some of those things, I would still tend to say hearing examiner is a good way for us to go because it just leaves council, you got the professionals, shall we say, to to make those decisions and really kind of keep things tight and bounded where it can get a little bit more free form and counsel and create challenges. So that's just for a little background there.
And for those of you who haven't been through it before, what happens when we use a hearing examiner is he holds the hearing, he gathers all of his findings, you know?
People can comment.
Right, there's, there's public comment for it and everything. And then he creates his decision with his findings and conclusions, which are then brought to you for you to vote on his, his findings. So it does, it does end up in your lap, but after a totally unbiased procedure has happened and all you guys at that point do is say, oh, well, you know, this was an unbiased procedure. And yes, we agree with, you know, what the hearing examiner has recommended to us.
And he's an expert in understanding city ordinances and applying them. And that's why using his expertise, it just makes it a cleaner decision for us.
Right.
So we're calling this administrative appeal. I'm, again, I'm not familiar with the background, but that suggests to me that there was a finding, the council or the city made, made a ruling or decision. He's contesting that and thinks it was the wrong decision.
It was staff, it was a staff member.
Okay, okay. So, okay, so we've, as a body, we've waited once already, it's being appealed.
No, you guys, you guys don't haven't touched it at all. And that's, that's the point is we don't, we don't want you to touch it and the city attorney doesn't want you to touch it.
Okay, okay.
A staff member, it was our code enforcement officer, got the complaint, investigated, made a determination, issued that determination with a notice of violation, giving Mr. Schroder notice that he had a month to clean up and abate the situation. And he used the fourteen day appeal period and came in on the final day and paid for an administrative appeal, which, so that all of you know as well, with an administrative appeal, they pay the fee, but the cost for the hearing examiner is totally on the city. It's not like when we have a SEPA appeal or something like that regarding development where they're responsible for paying for a hearing exam.
Any other questions? And thank you, Martin, for bringing out some of the history that was helpful for those of you.
Well, I'd make a motion that we approve, moving the administrative appeal of made by Mr. Paul Schroder to a hearing examiner.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Crinkie and a second by Gallagher. Any discussion of the motion?
Just a point of order. Are we allowed to move and make a motion on something that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to be discussed at the next meeting and because it is not a public hearing or anything like that, it's, it's fine that you make that motion tonight without it being on the agenda.
Bell brings up, Bell brings up a good point. Would Mr. Schroder be able to say that the city council met without his knowledge and made a decision this evening to move ahead and?
This decision has nothing to do with him getting to participate. This decision is only whether or not the council wanted, wants to hear it themselves or whether it will be moved to a hearing examiner.
Okay, good.
And that's the whole thing is that whoever would hear it, then Mr. Schroder's given notice and we're given, you know, when exhibits have to be turned in and all of that kind of stuff. This part of the process, he doesn't have to participate.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yep, not a problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay, and the motion passes. Thank you. Any other thing, any others? Bit miscellaneous, miscellaneous business?
I'm going to bring up one thing. I know also we've done our personal and city traffic counts around. And I'd like to mainly keep it on our, you know, radar on poplar. on Poplar and two sixteenth on the crosswalk. Um, I know Sham has brought it up and I mean, I, I really think, you know, we got flags or now would really like to see us do some kind of electronic flashing light. Just to improve the safety of that intersection for our community.
Thank you. We do have a new traffic counter that we're using now. We just got it. And so we are in the process of gathering data on that intersection and going over it with our engineer. But that we, that is in process and part of it is we want to do it during a time which represent when school is on. You know, when it represents a good time, we had some times when the schools, there was no school and so we don't want to do it then. So that's definitely on our radar. Thank you, Mr. Nick.
Thanks.
Anything else? So we don't have anything for our workshop meeting for next week. And so I would need a motion to cancel next week's workshop meeting.
Guess what? I'll move, we cancel next week's workshop meeting. Second that motion.
Now we have a motion by Gallagher and a second by Nick to cancel next week's workshop meeting. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motions, seeing by by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? Oh, yes. The motion passes.
Tuesday night skiing events.
So we're gonna, we're going to bring our chief of police into the meeting to see if he has any comments. For now, as you know, we're going to have a workshop meeting after this meeting and the chief's going to have some comments with respect to vehicle leasing program. But I'll let him address the council now with respect to anything else that he's working on. All right, chief.
Good evening, council. You know, can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect.
Hey, I just wanted to let you know a little bit about what's been going on. I, some good news this week came with legislation with some of the laws that they had put into place, law enforcement specific. Uh, one of those highlights is the redefining of what military weapons are and how that applies to Breyer is when it comes to, you may or may not have been given any kind of information about some of the tools that we use, but we do have a FN three oh three, which alternate, less lethal force option that basically you look at it and you think it's a a pain gun, pain ball gun, but it's a specialized type of not firearm, but a specialized type of weapon that we can use for less lethal options. So the legislation was very specific in the FN three oh three of redefining it as not one of those restricted items. So since we do own two of them and we recently purchased them, it was always kind of in a gray area, but that was a, a good defining moment of letting us know that that tool that we have that is less lethal is approved by the legislation. And there's a lot more going on that's going to be presented here in the next coming weeks about redefining and kind of roll backing some of those those option or those laws that were really heavily instituted. And as we have seen with crime spiking and, and so forth, they're, they're reevaluating some of those and and loosening up those restrictions. So that's a real positive. Uh, we're just continuing on with the process and operations of the department. Things are going well and that's about it.
Chief, we could talk, we've had some officer training happen. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Well, sure. Frankie Montague went to a two week course on firearms instructor. Uh, it's the basic course that the state requires for anybody that is going to be an instructor in firearms. He completed that with a ninety seven percent. Uh, and he's very excited about it. And so are we. So he, of course, is the person that gives me proposals and ideas about firearms. Now he can back himself up with having this certification behind him. So we're very excited about that process. Uh, last week, Kelly went to a interview and techniques class, a two day class that will, it's a really good class that most police officers should go to because we obviously interview a lot of people and that process allows you to read body language and kind of get a baseline and determine some deception and validity also into their statements. So uh, those are the two trainings that we've had recently and they're very excited to start using both of those two disciplines in their daily operations.
Yeah, thanks, chief. Chief and I meet weekly and he reports to me the things that are going on and so I'm really pleased with what's happening with the police department right now. Our police officers and the chief spend some time at our local schools, our Breyer schools, helping out there. And so we appreciate the efforts that they have with their, with their kids too.
Hey, chief, uh, I was curious your take. So we used that one time and that kind of went away and it's been back a little bit. There used to be kind of, I don't know if quite called a blotter, but there was kind of a, just a generalized set of information about the types of crimes that happened. There was a lot, you know, whether it be people breaking into open cars, you know, crimes of opportunity, things like this. And I, I certainly know that there's perceptions that people get because if you have a cluster and a certain, you know, it kind of can spark uh, some discussion, especially these days with the Facebook and all that. And so sometimes the data is actually really good to help to show what the real story is. What is your take on, you know, kind of moving towards maybe a quarterly type of report that citizens can see?
Can you hear me? We just switched microphones. Do I sound better now?
I can hear you.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you, Paula. Uh, so that has been one of my big topic items is the transparency of statistics in the department. With our new, with Karen Howell, our new police clerk, she, like myself, is, we are learning this new world system of pulling and extracting the data from the system. So I am in the process of learning that myself so that I don't have to rely on Karen because she's trying to learn her new job. So I'm trying not to put too many top projects onto her. So that is definitely one of my things that I would, I want to do to present to council quarterly, also for my end of year report for you. And also maybe even just start back up with our police blotter with Malick Terrace News. So all in the game of transparency. So, yes.
Thank you, Martin.
Thanks, chief. I, I just want to give everyone just a heads up because we know what's going on right now. Is there's a lot increasing and it's going to get even worse is the theft of gasoline out of your vehicle. So I mean, to be diligent and locking gas gaps can go a long ways. Um, because the price of gas is going to increase and we're going to, that's a new, you know, you get the catalytic converter, now it's going to be our gasoline. So those are, you know, little crimes that come into our, you know, little local areas.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief? Yeah, thanks for bringing up about Karen. Karen's new with us. She's learning our system. She has lots of experience, but she has some things to learn. Maria uh, is coming in and helping with that training, helping her make the adjustments over. And so we appreciate the, the help we're getting from Maria as well. All right. Thanks, chief. We're going to move on here to already have accounts and then we'll see you late, a little bit later in, in the, after we adjourned to, as we go into workshop. So taking over, Mr. Gallagher.
So this evening I would like to move approval of the February twenty twenty two payroll checks numbers. Oops. Uh, we're missing numbers there. I didn't notice that before.
You had rehearsed this too, right?
Well, this is the one they don't give us ahead of time.
Oh.
This is the test.
You're missing something, aren't you, Mike?
Yeah, this is a test, I suspect.
Open up the sea. Unless there's no gaps, it's the question.
Yeah, yeah, I get to look at the.
Vertically.
Okay. Number four, three, four, five, one. Four, three, four, nine, three through four, three, four, nine, six. And then four, three, four, nine, eight.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Four, nine, seven.
Whoa.
Incorrect amount. And the total amount of one hundred and sixty two thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and twelve cents.
I think you wanted to say what she said.
Thank you.
Exactly.
So moved.
You got it.
There you go.
Okay, sorry about that, sir. We have a motion by Gallagher. Do we have a second? I heard a second from somebody.
That was, that was me.
Okay. Motion by Gallagher, a second by Cranky. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and the motion passes.
So let's try it for B here until that works out. So I would move approval of the February twenty twenty two claim checks numbers four, three, four, nine, nine through four, three, five, three, two, and the amount of one hundred fifty five thousand, three hundred twenty nine dollars and no cents.
Second that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Gallagher, a second by Nick. Any discussion to the motion?
I did look at every one of those.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion passes. So this time we're going to adjourn the meeting at seven forty three PM. And then we are going to go directly into a Breyer City Council workshop meeting. All right. So tonight for this workshop, we're going to discuss vehicle leasing program for police vehicles. Our chief on quest has a PowerPoint presentation that he's excited about sharing with us if, if it will work. You want to go ahead, start chief and just explain or you just want to go right into the PowerPoint? Either way.
Okay, I, I think I should just go right into the PowerPoint for you. Let me let me do this. There. Oops. Share screen. There we go.
Try it now.
Okay, try it now. Okay.
There it is. All right, we see it. Thanks, chief. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so this is a leasing program that I've been working on for a few weeks now and I've presented this to the mayor and to Councilman Nick. And also talked it over with Paula, obviously as the financial piece to ensure that we're going down a right direction or a direction that is, that is even feasible. So police leasing vehicles, why, why should we lease? So leasing is really that low cost source of being able to acquire vehicles at a ratio that, as you will see, is more advantageous than purchasing a car outright or purchasing, purchasing several cars outright. Uh, it does give you that purchasing power to be able to do that. It gives us this reliable fleet, which I will describe each one of these as we go along. And then the big thing is that a lot of our out of pocket maintenance repairs will go away. So the law, low cost source is that it, it's definitely a, a very smart way for us to be able to not finance, but purchase vehicles that are reliable up to date. So the officers can use these vehicles to serve the community in, in a way that is again, uh, when you go out there to turn it on, it actually does turn on because they're reliable, they're new. Uh, it does take the pain out of the budget of, of a known cost of our vehicles uh, just due to warranty, um, sustainability and having a fresh vehicle uh, to be able to, uh, serve the community. The purchasing power is that you, you, you're able to budget a, a large sum amount, amount, which right now we budget around fifty five thousand dollars. But as you see, we move along, this one time allotment of what one car would cost, we're able to bring on more than one vehicle to appropriate into our fleet. A reliable fleet is one of the big drivers here. Uh, the police car is the officer's office. There is no doubt, just like all of you that that work in an office or whatever environment you in, that you work in, the officer writes most of their reports in the car. You know, they eat lunch in the car. Sometimes they are visible in the car. It is definitely their office. And for a day to day reliability in a vehicle is extremely important in an officer's day to day function. This will also obviously reduce a lot of the, of the frustrations that we have been having with our current fleet. We put a huge burden on public works. I mean, even today, we ferrying cars over that have battery issues and draining issues or just other issues that I have to rely on public works to uh, ferry cars back and forth. And also with maintenance issues of driving them to Ford to get repaired. And I want to really try and reduce that because public works shouldn't be the ones that are uh, that I have to call every day. I shouldn't have to call Steve Smith every day. He's like, hey, Nick, do you need a jump start? So, which is pretty much a lot of the case. So it's also a big recruiting tool, believe it or not. Um, when even myself, when I come to a police department or others come for, to a police department to potentially work there, they look at the fleet. They look at not only the graphics and the color, but what is, how does the fleet look? The inside is super important and what years of cars that we have. So this is a recruiting tool as well, uh, kind of an initiative. Our out of pocket maintenance repairs, these will be brand new vehicles with the standard Ford, three years, thirty six thousand miles. We are looking at a four year warranty or a four year lease. So all of these maintenance and all the breakdowns are covered under warranty for the first three years. And I'll go into that fourth year here a little bit because I know when we talk about being able to have everything covered under warranty. And then there's this one year period of the lease that they're not under warranty and I, and I'll kind of talk to you guys about that a little bit. So this is our current fleet. Uh, obviously I just received a car, so it's got low miles and then we have fourteen, sixteen, eighteen and twenty one uh, years of Ford interceptors and these are the current miles. I can tell you from my several years of being in the business, you get a car around a hundred thousand miles. You're, they're, they're not as reliable. We all know that police cars are driven differently uh, than a standard car. I drive my personal car way different than I drive my police car just because of the fact that there's stop and go, there's acceleration, there's all those things that happen to a a police cruiser that the standard car doesn't go through. So we find ourselves into some of the repair issues that we have been seeing. So this is our current out of pocket, non warranted items uh, that we have expended on our current fleet. And obviously the eighteen, the twenty one, they're within warranty. Uh, they, they don't have any issues right now. Uh, and the fourteen and sixteen, those are the ones that had the hundred, you know, over a hundred thousand miles. These are the ones that are starting to nickel and dime us. Uh, today or yesterday, we put another about three hundred and fifty dollars into the P four, if you will, for injectors and spark plugs. And it's just when you get to these, these, these marks, these cars start really degrading. So that's the unique side of a lease is that you lease these cars and every four years you get a brand new car. Just like the ones that we have right now or the ones that we get at that four year mark, at that lease option. The, whomever we go with, they will have a car ready to go for us, exactly like the one that we brought in. The, whomever we go with, they will have a car ready to go for us, exactly like the one that we brought in. So what am I asking for? So we currently have four patrol cars. I want to retain the twenty-twenty-one. There's no reason of getting rid of a brand-new car that, that we paid full price for. So if we add four cars, we'll have five cars to our fleet. That's not counting mine, of course, but five cars dedicated to patrol. And the reason why we would want to add one is not just because we have a brand-new car that we own, but a lot of times when officers have court, they have training, a car goes down. That just impacts the fleet. So it's always wise to, I'm not saying that the fifth car is going to be a spare car, but it's a car that doesn't, if we go down a car, it doesn't hurt the actual patrol rotation in the way that the fleet is used or assigned. So these are leasing options. Though, there's two different kinds of leasing. I've learned a lot. I've never leased a car in my life. But I learned a lot about the different kinds of leasing. So your standard lease is, is, is a flat rate, no percentage. It gives you the four-year terms, and you're not financing anything. So you're basically getting one price, and that's the price that you pay. Municipal leasing, these are all financed. These all come with interest rates from anywhere from, and I will show them to you, anywhere from four to, I think, eight percent. And these are mostly lease-to-own options. And the problem with lease, municipal leasing is that in one aspect of this, they'll give you a, a car platform. But then you have to go outside of that window, and you have to find third-party vendors to outfit everything. And that's also additional cost to Breyer that doesn't come with the lease price. So this is the first, I've got three bids for you on leasing. This is the standard lease. This is a company out of North Bend. And before you, I have two platforms. So right now, we do have what's called a slip top, no light bar, fully marked. And then one with a light bar, fully, fully marked. So you can see there's only a price difference of a, of a couple dollars between the two. But if you look at the, at the lease terms, you can see that for these cars, it's this much per month. This type of car, it's this much per month. And they give us a sixty-thousand-mile allowance on four years, which we will not meet. And this is the total yearly price of the six, fifty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Now, if you remember, when you just approved my police car, it's budgeted at about fifty-four thousand is what you had budgeted for a police car. Now, that could have been one of these Ford interceptors, but it just so happened, and we don't need to go into it, the police chief's car needed to be replaced. So just for a couple thousand more dollars, you're able to, to purchase four cars for the price of one in this type of lease program. With this particular company, First Capital Equipment, they want you to finance two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars at this three-point-five percent interest rate. This is a lease-to-own option. And this is something that we are trying to get away from because we, where we might get fifteen hundred bucks for a police car, it's not exactly ideal if we're wanting to lease these cars because the least portion of this is every four years, we get brand-new cars. So with this type of lease, you have to find all the equipment, as I had said before, through third-party vendors and locate the companies and do an outfit. This two hundred and thirty-two thousand or sixty-two thousand, eight hundred a year does finance everything from graphics to lights on the car. It's just that you have to go out and find it, and you have to go out and do it. And so that just adds time to being able to get a car rolling, unlike F C I, that they build the car and they say, here's four cars. The last bid I have for you is Acme Auto Leasing. Again, it's another municipal. This is a lease-to-own option. They want you to, the interest rate is much higher. You'll see that the monthly payment is less than the other two. However, you have to add another sixty-nine, six to nine thousand dollars of added equipment like I have listed here, in order to even make that car usable. Because they're basically going to give you a Ford interceptor with nothing in it. It is a police-rated, pursuit-rated car, but you have to then build it. So that cost of six, nine thousand dollars is not included in the finance portion of that fifty-two-five, if that makes sense. So you're looking more at sixty-one-five in order to get this full car put together. What is my recommendation? I recommend that we go with the standard lease of F C I. I personally have worked with F C I for probably more than twenty-five years in the agencies that I work for. They have built our police motorcycles to patrol cars, to SWAT. They are very much in tune with police vehicles, and they're obviously in the business of leasing. As you, if, if I can go back real quick and just show you something on F C I's bid, they show this residual amount. The residual amount means that because they are a business, after, at the end of that forty-eight months, that is what you can either buy the car for or a small town like Othello, Washington, that can't afford to purchase cars. They can sell that car for that price to a small agency that just needs something to kind of get by. So my recommendation to you is to go with F C I. It's, it's an all-inclusive lease. They, they provide us with exactly what we want, outfitted the way we want, and it's ready to go. And that will obviously give us a really nice fleet. So any questions?
Finishing off with a rock. There you go.
Couple questions. What, Chief, the attachment we had showed sixty, almost sixty-three thousand dollars for the four-year term from F C I?
Yeah, that's correct. Sixty-two, eight hundred. That's, yeah.
And you have like fifty-seven, five, and so I was trying to understand, or?
Fifty-six. I got fifty-seven. I'm looking at the same attachments that I sent you. What, what are you referring to?
Up, up, up at the very top, it, so this is that whole thing, because this also, so that's why I was confused. You talked about, well, there's this net amount to finance. And you said this is an option not to finance, so. But at the very top, it said this was lease-to-own. It said here, and it had sixty-three. So is this not the one that you're recommending, or is there?
Was it?
There, there were actually, there were three options, Chief. There was eighty-two thousand, five hundred per year for three years, sixty-two thousand, eight hundred per year for four years, fifty-one thousand, one thirty-six per year.
First capital.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there were three.
That's the first capital. That's.
Yeah. Oh, I was thinking that. Equipment and I and E, you know, tomato, tomato. Okay, all right, it's not the same one. That's the, yeah, that's what's coming.
Apples and oranges.
I kept saying F C, and I kept for first capital, but then noticed the next thing. Okay. What is our, what is our average cost per year right now on maintain, you know, for the police? Because we don't buy a car every year. And then we do have the maintenance and other things that you've been talking about. So what is, where are we currently running on spend for police cars per year, not counting fuel, obviously?
Yeah, um, well.
You know, Paul.
When, I, I don't know exactly what we currently, well, I can, I mean, this tells you what we pay out-of-pocket to keep these things running. So.
Twelve thousand, thirteen, twelve, thirteen thousand.
Right here, Chief.
That's just for those cars to date. That doesn't mean that's a year.
Yeah, okay, so the last brand-new car that we bought cost us fifty-four thousand dollars and was bought from state contract. Just for the record, state contract was five thousand dollars more expensive than F C I for the exact same vehicle. Actually, F C I's vehicle would have come fully equipped. The one from the state contract came without a pushbar in the front, which would have been an additional sixteen hundred dollars that we just in this last year had to pay to put on that vehicle. Because if that vehicle got into any kind of crash, it would have most likely totaled it because it did not have the pushbar to protect the front end. These vehicles, I, I've teased Nick this whole time that they're still Fords. We, we have had a history, and I can't tell you the exact dollar amounts, but I can tell you that we are spending thousands of dollars each year for the different repairs on these vehicles. That, because it's not just these ones, it's the ones that were before them that have been moved out of the fleet as well. It, and I'm sure a ton of it has to do with how they're driven because we have such a small, you know, community. They sit idling a lot. And so it just, that just ends up causing more issues with them.
Seems like the electronics keeps.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate all that. I guess, just fundamentally, and whether you take five years, because I, we, we spike, right? And also, we got two in a year, over two years, we need a car, whatever it be, and all that. But I was just average it out, five years, ten years, whatever. You know, we can even then ship because cars get more expensive. But I was just, you know, what is it that we're spending on vehicles?
Well, so if you go with the, the fifty-four thousand that we paid the last time, that really wasn't the full cost of the vehicle. You know, that right there, you know, over two years, you're, you're looking at, you know, twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. And that's just for one vehicle. Under Nick's proposal, we get four vehicles. And over the co, over the course of this, we, if we, if we were buying like we're having to, which is at least every other year, we're having to buy a new vehicle in order to keep the fleet running properly, we're, we're actually going to come out ahead.
All right. So I, I appreciate all that. I, I'll just say, and we've had this on a few other reports. Just, I do like to see the numbers out. It's all good. You know, this is all very well laid out this part, and it's always good to hear, here's what our current costs and that all laid out as well. I just like seeing it. I appreciate the conversation as well, but that's just me. Maybe I'm the only one, but yeah, because I don't, I mean, isn't it just the way we end up buying, it gets a little bit lost. I freely admit, and that's like, okay, so what is it really taking us out? Because obviously, in two years, I mean, are we rotating a car every two years? And so that's cost. So that's why I just, I'm not saying the numbers are so greatly different. I just, it's just.
Like the chief was talking about is reliability. Part of it is recruiting. Part of it is the fact that every week, we have to send public works people, it seems like multiple times to have them drive cars because they don't start. Something's wrong. It's, it's just been a real difficult thing to keep having to maybe these cars on, and this way, we, we get rid of the problems. If they don't start, it's somebody else's problem, and then we recruit the.
I understand, and I'm not, I'm not disputing that, and I think it's, those are good arguments for it. Just, I mean, are we talking a five K difference? I mean, there is a value to that, absolutely, but I, I just, that's why I was just trying to understand what, where we are today, what we've been averaging over a period. It can't be two years. We got spread a little bit more. And then with this, I mean, feels like to me, that's a good way to just kind of have a sense of that. And then we say, okay, these other things, not having to have staff, but I, I mean, I don't think it's probably every day. I mean, I heard that comment, but.
No, it has been every day for quite a while.
I'll tell, if I can tell you a story. Last week, when Kelly went to school, you're, I, I worked the street for Wednesday and Thursday. And and I think it was Wednesday, I got a call, and I, I ran out to one of the cars, and it was dead. So I had to run back in the station to grab a different key for another car, ran back out there, it was dead. And then I go in like, well, one of these is going to work. Hopefully, on third try, I found a car that actually would start. And so it's just, those are common scenarios in the six weeks or so that I've been here, that every day there seems to be a problem. And so, which is one of my driving forces of wanting to have that reliable, sustainable fleet to, that is reliable for the officers, and also so that we can respond to crisis in a, in a timely manner.
How many cars do we want to have?
I, I would like to have five patrol cars. That's not including mine. Five patrol cars. We currently have four.
I want to say something, man. I mean, you heard what the chief just said. He had to go out and it didn't start. Sometimes minutes, seconds can make a difference in a call like that. And he, he has to go out, and he took a third try. And he has to go get separate keys every time. And I think talking with the chief, we can get vehicles that are key to like, so that one set of keys fits all of our fleet, which would be a great thing. And I don't know if anyone knows, our fleet right now doesn't have key fobs to unlock the doors. And I don't, don't know why that was taken out of the budget on those cars. But I mean, reliability for our residents is everything, and our department. So I mean, that's just what I got to say about that.
Paula, Mr. Mayor and Chief, or actually anybody who potentially could answer this, any comp cities that have made the transition from purchasing vehicles to the lease? I mean, do we have any, like, case studies or information of what kind of savings they've seen, reliability? I know we face of the potential of having a fleet where we have, you know, one-year window where we don't have coverage. So in that fourth year, right? So do we have any information on, you know, any comp cities that made a transition from purchase to, to lease?
That, that's an extremely good question. I, I cannot tell you off the top of my head any of that information, which I will dig into and report back to you for sure. So I know that there's, there's, there's cities like, I believe, Renton and Renton, and I think Pasco rents or leases their cars from F C I. A lot, a lot of companies do, or agencies do lease from F C I. So I can certainly gather that information for you and report back.
Is that, is that the norm, you think, that most most places are, are leasing, or they purchase their vehicles?
I don't know if it's the norm. I think for a city our size, bigger cities have larger fleets with fleet departments and maintenance yards and people that, all, it's all they do is maintain vehicles. And so I, I think because we don't have that, and because we're already shorthanded in public works, that this alleviates that problem for a city our size, because we, the, the vehicles get replaced frequently, so we don't have to worry about them breaking down.
And the mayor, if I could, the mayor drives home a really good point that if, if, I think if Breyer was just a little bit larger, maybe we would have a mechanic that was an employee. I think that shop mechanics that are city employees, they stay up on their fleet much better than cities that don't. Because they, they, when they do their, their checks of the cars, they're like, oh, I'm seeing that, you know, these brake pads are wearing. So they're able to replace them at an oil change, where we just go and get an oil change, and they're not giving it kind of the full once-over. Where if a shop mechanic might say, oh, these brake pads need to be replaced, otherwise, in about you know, a couple of weeks, I'm going to be replacing rotors as well. So there are a lot of preventative things that a mechanic, a fleet mechanic would normally do, where we don't have that luxury.
Do we, looking at the list of vehicles, would it be at all advisable to get three now and then roll into the other five as they start seeing a maintenance spikes? That'll rotate our fleet a little bit so that they don't all timeout at once.
If I could add to that, Mike, Paul, on page nine of the budget, I see that our capital equipment for twenty-twenty-two is fixed at fifty-four thousand dollars.
And. That was for the purchase of one patrol vehicle.
Bill, and then, and then in addition, we have a request, I think. Bill, and then and then in addition, we have a request, I think, in our packet today for a Ford Ranger truck to replace something for public service. So. Maybe to Mike's point, do we, do we have the money in a budget based on our capital equipments that we've we've outlined for twenty twenty two to actually buy? Three vehicles here and something that public service needs as well, public works.
Which is also.
We will end up having to do a budget amendment to purchase the vehicle for public works because we didn't budget for that. That doing budget amendments each year is a common occurrence. Cause you 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 have stuff like that come up, so that's not, that's not an issue. We do have the money. Um, they also come out of two different pots, public works vehicles. Um, a large portion of them gets paid out of sewer and storm. And then another portion of them gets paid out of, uh, general fund. The cost for the leasing for these vehicles would become a general fund expense. It would not be a capital expenditure. And based on the savings that we have that we're into the third month of the year. Uh, with and we're down three police officers. And I'm guessing it won't be until in the fourth month of the year that we. Even have a fourth police officer, we are going to have a savings. In the police budget that will more than cover. The expense for the lease for this year, and then we will, we would budget for it accordingly in the coming years. Out of general fund in their in their budget, it will no longer be in that capital equipment. Capital equipment is when we purchase outright.
Now, something else to note is that we budget for a car, but we don't always use it every year. So that's why I've been asking what's our actual. Expense run. Because we will, if we didn't need to get in here, we didn't, but we left it in there. So we didn't have to do the amendments and it was good planning. But if you were to look at the expenditures to your side, you would not find on every year that that budget for a police car was spent. So that's why I was just trying to get an understanding of. What is our run rate now versus the new run rate? And I think that's a fiscally reasonable thing to ask. It's not saying that that would determine. Because there's a lot of other good things we're talking about, but that's why I was trying to understand that.
Yeah, and it it has been that every other year we. We have to buy a new police vehicle. The reason why we didn't get one in twenty twenty, do we all want to say it together? It was COVID, it was, it was ordered at the beginning of twenty twenty. And, uh, because of COVID, uh, we were not able to get it until twenty twenty one. And that's why we have a twenty twenty one Ford interceptor instead of a twenty twenty. Um, but we, and that has been an ongoing deal because the last, uh, Ford interceptor that we got rid of. Uh, was a two thousand and twelve. And so it it's been pretty consistent that, uh, every two years we're having to replace one of those vehicles. Because they have reached their lifespan. Which, you know, in this case. Technically, that would have been. Seven years for that one. Because by the end of nineteen, we had determined that that car had to be replaced, ordered a new car in twenty twenty and then.
But you work off of that. So you're saying is we're currently, let's just run that then. Well, plus let's throw, I mean, his maintenance is from whenever they started starting to see the thing. So there's another twelve. Okay, I don't know, maybe I'll I'll I'll. Have it for the moment, but that's so we're running it about call it thirty five K. Uh, a year right now, and we're suggesting maybe a fifty seven K per year run rate. Is that what I'm? I'm missing.
It's, no, it's not going to cost us fifty seven thousand a year. That's not what the. Nick, jump in here.
Yeah.
All the numbers off the top of my head.
Yeah, I I think what you're what you're seeing here, like when I bring up this slide here. This isn't like the, like, for instance, the twenty fourteen, the P two there at thirty five, ten. Those are, those are things that happened in like your, um, see, when I look at it, uh. Like almost year five of the car, we started having these breakdowns. Again, the longer you keep a car going, the the more breakdowns you're going to have. Um, the 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 this twenty sixteen. It still burns about three to four quarts of oil a week. And Ford seems to not figure it out. We were hoping that this injector thing that we did this week. And the spark plugs have maybe helped it out. But it there's, there's a serious problem with that car and I'm hoping that it, um. It it stays with us through this process. Um, but, uh, Councilman Crinkie, back to your question about like, what what's going to be our run rate? I think that, um. I don't know if I can exactly answer that, other than get kind of showing you right here what our to date is in the last couple of years of. Of, uh, at least the the fourteen and the sixteen model. I think that i- it will just continue to climb the longer we keep them. So.
Anybody on the panel owned a Ford over a hundred thousand miles? Cause I have. It gets pretty pricey.
Oh, I, I don't think mine counts, the one I have, because it's a diesel, so, uh, little build a little differently, um. But I think, but the number is the per month, right? I mean, per year is that you showed on the other slide, chief, that. The lease option is going to be fifty seven K a year, right? That's about what we're talking about. I have that right? Yeah.
Uh, right. So it'd be roughly fifty six for, if we went with FCI, it'd be fifty six for a year. For four cars.
I just want to interject here. Maybe Paul, you can help me maybe even after the meeting here clarify this, but I'm looking at the twenty twenty one. Uh, police repair maintenance vehicle, major unscheduled, uh, costs. We, uh, reported one thousand forty five dollars in repairs for just the police vehicles. Uh, although we budgeted eight thousand dollars for the year in repair of police vehicles. Our total capital expenditures for the year capped out at forty eight thousand. I don't know. What else that involved, but it looks like the repair cost for big vehicles, at least as they're being reported in the budget. Are certainly less than what Nick has found here. So something has happened with our vehicles lately here today.
But it fluctuates, right? I mean, you could have that budget that year, but the year before they could have stuck with a big bill for eight K because, uh, you know, you ended up having go in and. Change your time belt and bunch of whatever.
Yeah, no, I don't have that information, Martin. You're right.
So yeah, there is the historical trending, but I was trying to be really, I was trying to play conservative. I mean, it. I maybe I didn't even get high enough on a thirty five K, but I mean. It it. Looking at it, I mean, if I even bump it up more, maybe we're bumping our costs fifteen K, but there's all the other things that the chief is talking about as well, but. Okay.
I would also like to better understand what our. Annual expenses sort of averaged out over the last. Let's say eight, eight years or so would be just to have a big picture of it. Um, I'm curious on two points, the sixty thousand miles, um, allowance that's. On these vehicles looks like it's going to be adequate based on the mileage of the older vehicles in the fleet. But knowing that we've been short staffed, um, during those those cars lifetimes, I'm wondering if we have an idea. Um, what the typical annual mileage is on the vehicles and are fairly certain that it's not going to exceed sixty.
Yeah. If I may answer your question, uh, Councilor Osman, is that I did an average, um, on the, and it's it's right around fourteen thousand. Miles a year. For our cars. Per year.
Excellent. And then, um, I would like to echo Mike's concern about rotating the fleek fleet and having the ability to. Um, maybe roll in at least vehicle or two every couple of years instead of four at once.
The one, the one thing about this, I mean, I will say to chief, so. Point is that since we're they're wholesale that with the other one and I don't want to, I'm doing it right, a car lasts. We're treating a car for six years, maybe it's eight years, uh, with four, uh, if we're rotating one out every two years. So. Um, the thing is, is that because you go four years and we don't really see the problem at four years. And if we're staying at sixty thousand, we're well under. Which I do agree that hundred thousand and the stop and go. And yeah, I mean, I, as I I had a friend in South Pacific, uh. That was on campus security and let me tell you, slow driving, that those things got worn out. Quite badly, uh, just because of that type of usage. Uh, you are swapping them all out at four. So do we gain anything? By alternating, which we do, we have to stagger them by, because we can't spend, you know, we're not going to go spend two hundred thousand a chunk. But with this lease program that is, I mean, you're only going to four years and you're at theoretically no more than sixty thousand miles. Chief says we run under that by a little bit. Fifty six thousand for all those cars. So, or for cars. So anyway, that. To me isn't as much though. The number is feeling right now like a jumps up. I understand the five cars, but we need at any given moment. We have at most what not counting the cheese cart, two cars on the streets for some of the shift overlap if we're fully staffed. Is that correct?
Yes. Sometimes, sometimes, yeah, mainly two, two times, two officers on at different times of the day stagger. Two cars out there.
For me, yeah, yeah, anyway, okay, thank you.
So to to pick up on that a little bit, Martin, I was just wondering about that myself. So. We've. Obvi- it it would appear that with six cars total, including yours, chief. Then the idea is some. Component of re- reliability or backup so. Um, that if one car is down for a reason, we have more. And then how many cars do we need at any one point to Martin's, uh, question? Do we anticipate that at some emergency situation, we'd have all of our officers on duty and needing cars? Is that, is that? Something we consider?
I mean, you always have to plan for the worst, right? So I was not here in this city when you had the protests. Right over here at this intersection. I mean, that would be a all hands on deck, uh, of. Plant spacing out your your staffing in different locations. And obviously that would require a car for cover and being able to, uh, uh. You know, escape egress out of a situation. So, I mean, obviously, we don't have those critical situations all the time. But there would be different times, whether it be special events or those critical times when we have to ha- have officers on duty. Where we would need to utilize potentially all the cars. So. Yes, not real frequently, but the answer would be yes, at times.
Okay, we're, so we're running about, well, yeah, but we're running about eleven K a year per each car. Uh, if if I get, if we had five, that's how we're getting to fifty six. I have to admit, and I appreciate the wanting five. Um, and knowing. I would probably be more up for the the four at the moment if we really felt a fifth later was to be added in, but. The numbers don't see seem as egregious to me if I don't have that fifth card. And the fifth card for me just seems to be pushing based on just. And this is all back of the envelope kind of calculations based on not having anything else and just kind of trying to be pretty conservative. I'm probably overestimating up on how much we're costing, but. Anyway, that's just.
Like, is, is, is the fixed, is the lease cost fixed per car? So, uh, in other words. Do you see any kind of savings by leasing four versus leasing two versus leasing one?
Yeah, so those would be the costs. So whether you want one to four, those are the monthly costs right there, at least on this FCI bid.
So I, yeah, I would, it would. Kind of tied it all together, it would seem like we would get three now. Cause we, we can't get the value back out of the eighteen, I would suspect based on what I'm hearing. And, uh, that one's not kind of miles. To start bumping into the reliability issue. Do three now and then, uh, the year or two, get rid of the eighteen and then. Um, we'd kind of be on a cycle where we'd have or get to then if we had more officers. And then we'd have, uh, a little bit of a, of a. Over overlap, we wouldn't see them all timing out at the same same time, which being around. The variety of fleets over my life, that's a problem.
So chief, is that a possibility that we would stagger that a little bit?
Uh, we could certainly, we could certainly work with that, um. You know, I I still strongly, uh, believe in having five cars. Uh, I, for the obvious reasons of the I've already explained. Uh, I would be, obviously I'm at your will. But my recommendation would be that if we did want to stagger the cars, um. Is obviously get rid of the older cars like P two, P four that are giving us the most problems. And maybe, uh, stagger eighteen at another time. Like.
Well, if you get, if you get three cars now, you flush two and four. You've got your five cars and we still get a little bit of an overlap.
Yeah.
Two more, two years later.
Yeah, and then we could have the conversation and see how it's all going and.
Yeah.
See what usages maybe track, yeah.
Well, I. I completely get, uh, you know, we're trying to build up a fully staffed police department. We want the, uh, equipment for them. The concern with the five cars is, I know we also have needs at the public works department and. Having a, uh. Uh, really well equipped department. On one end and maybe a less adequately equipped department on the other. I'm not sure if, uh. If that's the right plan and I I want to, uh, see how we're looking at the city's needs kind of, uh, holistically.
Okay, yeah, that's a legitimate question. Um, so let us do this, let us go back. Nick and I'll go back over this and look at maybe an option of. Bringing instead of four, three and staggering. Uh, the two newest vehicles in and see once what kind of numbers we come up with. Um, because it's probably going to be different, right? Chief, if we're talking three instead of four.
Yes, less.
It'll be less. So let us, let us do a little bit of research on that, the costs and looking at alternative and then talking about it. And part of this obviously has to do with, you know, us bringing new officers in. Um, we don't know exactly what the timing, the chief's making great progress. With bringing officers in and so, um, we want to be ready for that, but we don't know exactly what the timing is. On that as well. So we'll go back and do a little bit more work and then we'll come back to you as a council. Any last questions for the chief?
Just a lot of things. Thanks for all your hard work, chief.
Oh, no, bro. I I I appreciate you guys, uh, giving me great questions. Uh, it also helps me to think about how your minds work so that I could prepare, be a little more prepared for some of the questions that you have. So, uh, I just appreciate you being workable in this.
Alright.
Figure it out, let us know how our mains work.
Alright, thanks, everybody. Let's move on to item number two. Discussion of vehicle replacement for the twenty oh two. Ranger and public works. Of course, this was not an expenditure that we saw coming, but. This is a vehicle that's very important for our public works department and we cannot operate without. That vehicle. I think you have a recommendation in front of you from Steve Smith, our public work supervisor. Any questions on that?
I was amazed there were, I've actually seen these fabrics. I mean, I also saw the higher end ones too, but they're a nice little truck. I was surprised that. They had the allotments, especially in the base models with all the constraints and everything. And I'm assuming the price, that's just straight up. You know, because of the government contracting, it has to fall within the. Uh, terms, so I was. Surprised actually that you could plan something like that.
As was I.
Any other questions?
So I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, there's a possibility that the vehicles. That Eric has right now is going to become this vehicle and Eric will end up driving. Um, this, this new one that we're talking about, because it has the other one, Eric's has a bigger. Uh, bed, longer bed. So that's, that possibility is out there. So we would be.
Yeah, figured out how to turn off. Uh, are we now this, yeah, and they're getting the crew cab, obviously, because that's. Easier to haul the crew around, so.
Right. Okay, no other questions at, um, discussion of street striping typically, street striping is something that we have done with. With the county. With the county, they were not able to help us this year. So. Steve got a bid that was actually even better than the counties. So hopefully um, that will be good choice. But any questions on that?
When will we find out if they have the paint?
Well, they say they have it now, but who knows what can happen in the future.
Yeah, good golly.
It'll be like their refrigerator reordered.
Mister Mayor. Yes, Don. Uh, sorry, but I was on mute. I was trying to speak uh, when the discussion was going on with the foreign ranger.
Oh, yeah.
Um, just, just a, a point. I, I, I looked at the truck, I looked at the mileage and I called my mechanic and I just said. What, what do you think about replacing the transmission versus buying a whole new truck? And he, he said, quite frankly, bring the vehicle by. He'd take a look at it if you got the maintenance records and he'd find it whether or not it makes more sense to just replace the transmission that truck or replace the whole vehicle. And he would have charged for that. So um, I don't know if we're making a decision tonight to actually get the thumbs up to, to, to buy a new vehicle. Or if this is something that's going to be contingent on further debate.
Yeah, I think we've kind of went through this in house here and um. Basically, that there's not much value left in that vehicle for it's, it's. One of those things, again, it's one of these things because we drive it in town, it's pretty much used up. And the recommendation, who looked, it was a four.
Uh, somebody came, I don't remember who they had look at it, but it, it was taken in. And the cost for the transmission is more than the vehicle is valued at.
Yeah, I, I mean, at twenty years old and knowing the mileage that these things have these. Uh, again, I mean, I actually, I was amazed, uh, when we had to do that with the, uh, well, we got the, when we got the three fifty, the uh. I was amazed it was twenty years old. I was, it survived.
Twenty years and ninety eight thousand miles.
Yeah, but it is a brutal. I mean, you heard the chief talk about the mileage on cars. The public works one is even worse.
Isn't that one of those moments where you have the tranny replaced and they drive off the lot?
Then the wheels fall off.
I'm just thinking, two thousand dollars for a transmission versus twenty eight thousand dollars for a truck.
But if the vehicles were fifteen hundred and you've got, you've amortized it over twenty years, uh, we don't quite do amortization, but. I, I think we well got our value on it. That's my first.
Yeah, that's, that's with the recommendation and the mechanic that we had.
Yeah, and the uh, same as uh.
Transmission was over, over, okay, it was over three thousand dollars.
Yeah, same as chief, um, um, Chris is talking about and somebody else was too, is the reliability factor. And it strikes me that the tw- uh, two thousand two was a two wheel drive one, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, so we're getting a four wheel drive vehicle, which has given us versatility and the follow weather that we uh, didn't have. So that becomes useful in the inclement weather situation. Dude, it's just, it's just twenty year old rig with a hundred thousand. Yeah, normally they would go two hundred thousand in ten years, but the type of uses is just a killer on these things. So.
And we always talk about retaining our employees and showing the appreciation for them. Sometimes little things like this to go a long way. And I know it's incurring a great deal of cost, but.
Well, and I think it goes to Mister Marley's point as well about trying to make sure we're keeping the public works up on.
All right, any more questions about the Ford Ranger or the street striping? All right, thanks, everybody. Yeah, we'll move on. We'll get some more information about the police.
I think Dave has some paint.
I have one, one question, which I probably should have asked earlier, but it's, it's uh, did the gas get ordered? Gas prices have just skyrocketed. So I just hope that order got placed.
Did we beat it?
Get credit for that choice.
Well, I don't know. I think it was a group effort.
Yeah, so we should all get it. Yeah, I was very fortunate because you're right. If you've gone to the gas station lately, we did get that purchase. That was just in the nick of time.
Yeah, because it came in un- under, you know, under the forty thousand, just barely. I think within like ninety dollars above what the bid that we originally were given was. So it, it was thirty five thousand and some change.
And I don't know what it would have been today, but obviously prices have gone up significantly in the last week.
Yeah.
They have.
Okay, good move.
Called to pull that trigger.
Right.
Yeah, once you decide, just make the run. I'm glad you guys did it.
Yep, yep.
All right, we'll see you in two weeks.
All right.
We adjourn.
Have a wonderful night, everyone.